Right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of North Plains. City Council meeting for our regular session meeting Tuesday, September 6, 2022, at 7:03. Please stand for the question.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please welcome Lauren. Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Kendall.
Here.
Counselor Martinez.
Here.
Counselor Payton.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon.
Present.
Mayor Lenahan.
Here.
And Counselors Page and Smith are both excused this evening. Great. Thank you, Lauren. Item number five in our consent agenda tonight is how there's four items on our consent agenda. First is Resolution 2200, appointing Michael Accordia, Accordi? Who can say that right?
Accordi, Accordi.
Accordi. Okay, thanks. To the North Plains Economic Development Committee to fill the vacancy with a term that expired December 31, 2022. We have Resolution 2201, Development Agreement with Lennar for Brinhill, phases four and five. Approval of the September 6, 2022, City Council Regular Session Agenda and the approval of the August 15, 2022, City Council Minutes. Before I ask for approval, are there any comments or additions, corrections to the City Council Minutes?
Super, super minor, but on the Police Department with their report, there's just a small typo where it says Counselor Smith said he is surprised there weren't more complaints about there the number five included in that about, so super minor, but just for the record.
Thank you. And also, I think, Michael, I know we asked to become, if you all wanted to ask him questions, let him introduce himself and that sort of thing. We can certainly do that after the consent agenda is approved, if that's all right with the council. Okay? So, any other comments or questions about the consent agenda? There are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Although to accept the consent agenda for tonight's meeting, September 6, 2022.
We have a motion on the table by Counselor Sheldon, seconded by Counselor Martinez. Any discussion? During then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. During then, motion carried. Thank you. So, Michael, would you like to say, would anyone like to ask Michael any questions? Or would you like to share your background information with the council?
Sure.
You're welcome to come up to the podium.
Hello. So, I've lived in North Plains for five years. I've got four kids, age two, four, six, and eight. Two of them go to North Plains. Or Oliver, I'm still getting the name right. But I'm a very designer and work over at Cameron. I've been there for almost a month, so it's been a very new position for me. And I'm just very interested in sort of the economic future, just the future in general of North Plains. And so I saw that open it and thought, well, I'd like to get involved in what happened.
Any questions or?
Thank you for stepping up.
Well, thank you for coming in and introducing yourself, and so councilmen will know who you are, and we welcome you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Yep. Item number six is public comment at this time. We encourage anyone wishing to speak to the council on subjects not on our agenda. Is there anyone in the hall or online that would like to share their thoughts? Lauren, have you received anything via email?
I have not received anything prior to this meeting.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on then. Item number seven, A, we have a meeting with DLCD, so. Would you like to come up to, we have two mics, you're welcome to sit here next to Andy. I'm greeting Andy and Laurie. Thank you.
So, introductions and, yeah. Thank you so much. Members of the council, my name is Kirsten Green. I'm the Deputy Director of the Department of Land Conservation and Development in Oregon. But I've been in this room before and I've written several faces. I came to you first as a consultant, at the same time as Heather. It went, I had an opportunity to help organize your vision and the beginning of your comprehensive plan update. So, very pleased to be back. I have to share a quote with you. From Daniel Burnham, who was an architect around the turn of the century, so late 19th, late 19th century. Mr. Burnham said, "Make no little plans. They have no magic to stir men's blood." Instead, Mr. Burnham said, "Make big plans, aim high, and hope and work." And you guys are doing that, it's really moving. And it's good to be back, and part of the reason I'm here today is that to introduce your new regional representative, Laura Kelly. And you have the best. Laura has been 14 years with the City of Bearden, and six with the City of Hillsborough. Of course, she came to the agency, and we're very, very pleased. You can imagine what depth of experience that means to us. So, she's been working with Lee McElvein, our Economic Development Specialist, and with Bill on your actual opportunities analysis. So, thanks for the opportunity just to kind of speak to it a little bit this evening. And do you mind hitting the next one soon? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So, the Department of Land Conservation and Development has a dual mandate. So, we're really always struggling with these two, two parts of our shoulders. We have conservation and development, and we take both very seriously. You know this very well, being surrounded by prime ag land and having ambitious growth plans. Even if you know the drill, you've grown up in it, or you've moved here, you know, you know that balance. We've been working collaboratively in support of both states and your local objectives for economic development. And we're grateful the opportunity to tell you a little bit about those efforts tonight. As you well know, your city is considering historic set of policy changes. For North Plains centered around planning for both housing and economic growth. And we wanted to talk a little bit about how DLCD has been supporting those efforts and how they fit into some of the big changes happening at the federal and state level, which is probably also noticed in the news. If you don't, I wish I missed them. I think we're moving, yep, we're moving on. Okay, so in recent years, the City of North Plains has been exploring big questions about your future, from housing to services and employment. And you recently adopted your economic policy priorities aimed at diversifying your tax base, moving away from sort of what we call bedroom community status to include more tech-based employers within the city. So, with growth, with change is difficult, and I actually talked to the mayor a few weeks ago, and I just really commend though that you're going to be managing a lot of change in your city, which is fantastic and intentional. At the same time, well, the city has been in the process of updating your economic opportunity analysis, or EOA, to quantify the expected growth in tech and other industries that you're targeting. At the same time, important developments have been occurring at the federal and state level. This summer, we saw the passage of two key bills on the national side. The Chips and Science Act, designed to boost American semiconductor research, development, and production, provided billions of dollars in direct subsidies and in tax credits to the industry. So, we've seen the buzz in the news, I presume, about the semiconductor work. The Inflation Reduction Act of this, just this last summer, also includes billions of dollars, $10 billion for clean energy manufacturing and other incentives for new advanced manufacturing production, as well as clean fuel production. So, moving, moving our country in the, in the, in the direction of advanced manufacturing fuels at the state level since March. And I'd be curious if any of you have sort of been catching this and following it, that Oregon's developmental, Oregon's semiconductor competitiveness task force has analyzed Oregon's semiconductor industry and how it can continue to thrive, grow, and help create prosperity and opportunity for more Oregonians. Just last month, the task force published recommendations on key factors that impact semiconductor manufacturing, including the research and development environment, workforce, industrial land availability, tax incentives, and regulations. So, the suite of recommendations go to say that, though your finance director knows this well, that just land doesn't do it. So, it's a, it's a right of these conditions that create, create economic development. So, if you want, please get over the next slide, thank you. So, through your EOA, you've been analyzing how these emerging opportunities could help support your economic development priorities, including exploring high-tech manufacturing, which is a big change for North Plains. We've been working with your staff to identify methodologies to include in the EOA that would account for these opportunities. EOA is our Economic Opportunities Analysis of the State, requiring analysis based on the balance of supply and demand to determine whether a city has an adequate supply of that employment land at the 20-year planning horizon. And that's really the nugget. So, for North Plains and the state, this EOA is presidential in nature. It's one of the biggest things we've ever seen. So, by, by land size, by doubling your land, it caught some attention. So, we wanted to really help make sure it could stand up to any legal challenge when you go expand your urban growth back. So, it's not necessarily this step that we're concerned about, your economic opportunity analysis, which other in the team are working with on, it's that UGB expansion, which can also be appealed. So, your EOA is presidential, it aims to attract the industry cluster, not present in the community today. So, this would require, of course, the inclusion of almost 700 acres of land to be brought into your urban growth gap to be an amount that could nearly double the size of your city, because it is so presidential and because we want to come now, because it's so presidential. DLCD staff have been working with North Plains staff to develop findings and refine analysis in an effort to minimize risks, who was likely to be a contentious UGB amendment process. We understand that a revised document will be brought to planning commission next week, and that's your council shortly after that. Probably coming out tomorrow, no?
We, we actually made a decision to the board.
Okay.
Okay. So, we'll follow up.
We've been watching our email.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
We just made a decision today.
That is, that's just in time, I believe, no problem. So, I'll talk, kind of, which I'll, Lauren, to talk a little bit more about the UGB amendment process, but is there any questions or comment on anything I've said so far about your EOA, how big this is for North Plains and the state? You know how big it is for you, but.
I have a question for you, but I think we've been away.
Sure, sure. Yeah, sure, Counselor, if I may.
So, when they double like that, the challenges, do you, you expect challenges in reality?
Yeah, it would be common.
And who would challenge it?
Probably folks associated with concern around agricultural land.
Oh, okay, all right. I understand.
Yeah, because it is.
I'm familiar with agriculture, so I know.
Yes, 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 yes. Yep. Are you seeing any pushbacks today from the ag groups? No. But we did talk to the Oregon Department of Agriculture, they had been unaware of the plant. So, we've been kind of trying to make sure that there are no surprises, and that when it comes out with the UGB expansion, that folks that would be concerned, no. So, they were, so maybe it'd be a part that you're not hearing about because folks weren't aware. But, you know, we've been talking with the Department of Agriculture, and you know, this is envision. Vision in our reserve. So, it's not, it's not on the table, right? In fact, that's why we're here.
So, because of your way. I identify with UGB expansion, city has. Need to approve the UGB expansion, as we're watching. Once it's approved, to the city will submit the, the public comprehensive plan amendment proposal to be to the Land Conservation Development Commission, or LCDC. Lauren, can I interrupt? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Would you mind pulling your mic a little closer to you? It's not the strongest, but it would certainly, you could do that. Okay, so, back to, city needs to approve, and then Washington County approves also. Then it will submit to, to LCDC, the Land Conservation Development Commission. This is a separate process from annexation. That annexation is something that happens at the city level. This would be a state, state-level decision. And in the next slide, I'll go over what happens after submittal to the LCDC. Next slide, please. So, upon submittal to DLCD, there's an online database where these things get uploaded, and it notifies, it notifies people that are signed up to the list. So, members of the public will get notification that this has come through. And for the first 21 days after submittal, there is a right to object. Those who participated in either the city or county process will both have the opportunity to file an objection within that 21-day period. The objection would need to be based on the same issues that were brought up at the, at the local process level. Once that objection 21-day period is complete, the department, DLCD, will consider objections if any were received, and will come up with our own analysis. And the department has 120 days to either approve the decision remanded, which means return it back to the city for some work, or refer the matter to LCDC, the Land Conservation Development Commission. We have 120 days from submittal to that decision, either approve, remand, or refer. On, if it does get referred to LCDC, there's another 90-day period in which LCDC, the commission, would need to act. And they also could approve, refer, or require, excuse me, approve, remand, or require specific amendments for land use regulation, provision. That would be completed by a specific date. UGB amendment decisions are appealable by DLCD. Sorry, UGB amendment decisions by DLCD or LCDC are appealable to LUPA or the Court of Appeals. And DLCD recently analyzed the past five years of UGB amendments and found that 83% of the submittals were not appealed, and ultimately, 95% were approved, even if they did go through an appeal. So, our staff is looking forward to continuing coordination with North Plains staff as the process for the UGB amendment gets underway.
That concludes our formal short presentation there, and council, we just sent to bring up the kind of context we're in right now. And if you have any questions for us.
I participated in the, the OBI semiconductor tour recently with Bill Reed. And it was quite impressive to see what Hillsboro is working on and in what direction they're growing. We all drive by there. And you can only imagine how expansive everything is, and they're aspiring, you know, to really sprawl that growth out. And, and, you know, it's happening for them, which is awesome, great, right? And then, but on a very selfish level, obviously, you know, North Plains also aspires to grow our economic, you know, economic base through industrial land and industrial and commercial expansion. And, you know, we're really grateful to be working with you. We've got a great staff who's working together and together with you, or DLCD, to, to try to navigate all of this, to make, to make it, you know, full proof. I mean, lock, just right in step, we want to be right, and we want to do it right. You know, but when I think about, when I think about that industrial growth and about what we aspire and what our EOA states regarding our deficit and, and that sort of thing. And I, and I understand the, the semiconductor task force recommendations, information that has come and come out, it makes me wonder how we should be leveraging that information for North Plains. To, I, I know DLCD knows that we're serious, but I want to know, like, maybe, how can we even leverage that information even more, right? To say, listen, we're open for business, and we want to complement, if you will, what is happening in North Hillsboro. And we want to be able to, you know, not only grow our economic base, but, you know, we want to be able to provide space for our residents to live, work, and play. Because as you know, after reading the EOA, you know how many people leave this, this city every day to go somewhere else to work. You know, myself included, and several of us on this council included. So, it would be lovely to be able to figure that out, but also, you know, how can we leverage that? You know, what can the state tell us to do so that we can, you know, check, check all those boxes to make this happen for, for North Plains?
Thank you, Mayor. Just well said and well depicted about the opportunities in a region that's sort of poised to round, if you will. I would really recommend you continue to, of course, work with that, but we're, we're a tiny net on the, on the surface of state agencies' resources. So, I would refer you as well to Business Oregon and their site selectors. Bill knows these communities quite well, but we're happy to make any connections, you know, needed. You know, I would, I would, I would tour those site selectors around, you know, as you're sort of, if you haven't already gone in, and they have already, yes, they have already. And then also applying for infrastructure funding, as we know that, you know, land is just one piece. You need the water, and the sewer, and the transportation, and the, and the trained workers. So, you know, I would also be angling into the workforce readiness programs of future Oregon, if you haven't already. Obviously, we'll be able to pull workforce from your region, and we'll all have to come from North Plains. You know, you got that part to move for the rest of your region. But just really thinking of a holistic strategy that builds on land availability. Believe me, there are thousands and thousands of acres in eastern Oregon that sit wanting for development because they don't have the other factors. So, just land alone doesn't do it. Hope that's helpful, but those are two that come right off the top of my head. It's the beginning of a really exciting journey, and then keep, don't let go. That's the other strategy. I'm sorry. Don't let go, we'll be down in the city. I have an excellent finance director you have, and you know, you worked in this field for years and years before coming to the city. So, really, you have just an amazing team. I think, you know, just making sure those, really, those site selectors are aware of your property. There is a website called Oregon Prospector, that you want to make sure those sites are up on, so that as people are Googling around, they're probably thinking, are you sure?
Yeah, I feel like we're, we're getting as, as much of this information and news out there. You know, I know that we're trying to be as active as we can, you know, on various social platforms, obviously. But you brought up Department of Ag, and I thought, oh, yeah, that, I don't know if we, you know, talk to them, or do we even, do we need to talk to them? I mean, is that something, you know?
It's never that easy to build relationships. And a fellow I've recommended is Jim Johnson. He was with DLCD for a long time, and now works for the Department of Ag in Delaney especially. He's well aware of every property in this region, having worked on the urban realty. So, it won't be surprising, it's not surprising that you guys are pursuing this. But I think, you know, relationships matter. I would encourage you just to say hello and be proactive in making those appointments. See if you have any questions. But this is the land use planning system working, there's nothing wrong with it. Just have to justify, we have to make sure it's justified, that's all.
Sure.
Because, you know, it is so presidential, so, you know. I apologize, I want to go to Bill and Andy about spitting under the hood of the methodology, but the tighter we can make it, I think the better for you when it comes to expansion. And also, present sort of flagrant uses of a, sort of a, jumping the track, if you will, I would call it. So, it's a city that doesn't have an industry in its town today, making a pitch for new. And there's nothing wrong with that either. The state's program actually allows for that, but it does, it does warrant some locational factors that you have all of. So, it's, you know, you've been, you know, it's, it's a very clear path of what you're doing, but it might be just sort of others out there that might not have such a good locational context that you do, that wouldn't be able to make this play as easily. So, just under the hood, we want to make sure the methodology is as tight as possible to kind of discourage others who might not be so well-positioned for, from, from being sort of overly aspirational. You guys are rightly aspirational.
Well, and if, if we're setting, we could potentially be setting precedents. You know, there are other communities across Oregon that might, you know, if this moves forward and we get the, the gold star and the bust move forward, you know, we could not just be helping North Plains and the residents here in our local jurisdictions, but other cities across the state saying, this is how we do it.
Definitely. We had, when we last updated the Economic Opportunities Analysis Guidebook in 2005, Hillsboro was the example, but maybe in the next update, that would be the example. I'm sure doing, I think, well, different things again for your patience.
Questions?
I don't ask any questions at this time. What am I, later?
Yeah.
I think, happy. Or to do vision, it's pretty important, this process.
Absolutely.
Almost past time, so. Whatever we need to lean on in lobby, that's the portion we need to start thinking about. I think the plans come together, in my opinion, pretty convincing.
Yeah, no, you get there. And I mean, Bill knows all the ingredients, you know, the infrastructure and the workforce. You can almost start working on those other aspects that, you know, because it's already, you're really underway in terms of land supply.
I'll answer questions. Just want to make sure.
Okay, I think it is a good sign that you don't have any questions. You'd ask if you had, if you were concerned. Well, thank you for the time. So, thanks to you, and you'll be working, Lauren, in the long term.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
You too. Yeah. Next on our agenda, we have two ordinances this evening. The first one is a second reading of ordinance 480. This is changing the term limits for the Parks and Rec Board member from two years to four years. Any comments or questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Let's second reading.
For second reading of ordinance number 480.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Counselor Sheldon, seconded by Counselor Martinez. Any discussion? During then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. During then, motion carried. So, ordinance number 480 is in ordinance amending chapter 31.62 of the North Plains Municipal Code Regarding Parks Board Member Terms of Office. All right. May I have a motion to adopt ordinance 480?
Will for done, ordinance 480.
One second. All right, we have a first on the table by Counselor Kendall, seconded by Counselor Payton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. And let me pull up this here. All right, the next ordinance that we have this evening is ordinance number 481, excuse me, Extending the PGE Franchise Agreement through December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency. So, Andy, you might want to give a little bit of background, so please.
Yeah, I will. So, apologies, everyone. Once we kind of switched horses midstream a few months back, when Spencer Parsons left the deployment of Gary Elsmer, and we got a new city attorney after kind of a month or so of interim figuring out that was going to be. During that process, we were negotiating the new franchise agreement with PGE for the electric franchise. So, we started that process early this year. Spencer left, kind of, to. So we started that process early this year. Spencer left kind of in whatever that was, May. And the franchise, um, which is a ten-year electric franchise, was expiring uh, in, in August. Other things popped up, working with Emily, the new attorney, on other issues. This just kind of fell off the table and P G E themselves had their own attorney turnover. So throughout the summer. Things just kind of jumped off the table. So we had a discussion with um, P G E just last week about the best way to handle this. We all agreed, well, let's just do a temporary extension to the end of this year. Um, to, to continue working on the, the franchise. So it's just a continuation of what we currently have in place. The next one is basically done. I think we'll come to probably in October or so. Um, with that, there was just a few key uh, things to kind of clean up that. The, the industry changes over a ten-year period and the city changes over a ten-year period. So just cleaning up some of those things and. Uh, this gives us a way to continue moving forward um, in being in compliance legally. So it would be adopted by emergency, so that way it's vector immediately, we don't have to do to um, the actual ordinance. And then I told um, P G E, easily, a government affairs person, I'll get in touch with them tomorrow if we passes, get it right outside. But this just buys us a little more time. We'll have the renewed franchise um, sometime that early ball.
Any questions from council?
None for me, other than I think I'll state that I don't like emergencies. I do support an emergency. In this case, uh, I will do it. Usually an emergency means we fail to plan somewhere else, so.
Yeah, we do.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, um, so we have a simple motion of, for the first reading and a sample motion for the second reading. I have a question, clarifying question on the second reading, the motion for the second reading. It also includes the adoption. Do, can we do that in one motion, or? Does it need to be three different motions and then declare an emergency? I'm just trying to understand if we, if we do two or three.
Was this taken from a, a, a previous emergency ordinance?
No.
No, it wasn't?
No, but I can try and find one, but I.
Think you can do it in two?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to make sure it's procedural.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's go with your instinct. You've done this enough.
Great.
Yeah, we'll do three.
Okay.
Yeah, that better skip, sorry.
Okay. All right. Um, if there are no other questions, um. Do I have a motion for first reading?
I move to conduct a first reading of ordinance four eight one by title.
One second. All right, we have a first on the table by Council Martinez, seconded by Council Payton. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carry. Ordinance number four eighty one. Uh, is an ordinance extending the non-exclusive electric franchise granted to Portland General Electric Company declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion to conduct a second reading?
I move to conduct a second reading and adopt ordinance four eight one.
Senator.
Do you want to do them separately?
For clarification, we're going to do the second reading and then do a third motion to adopt it by emergency. Okay. So do you want to amend your motion? Um, to conduct the second reading of four eight one. And not enough. And not enough. For clarification, I move to conduct a second reading of ordinance four eight one.
I know, I'm sorry to that.
All right, we have one first by Council Payton, second by Council Kendall. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carry. Ordinance number four eighty one. Uh, is also an ordinance extending the non-exclusive electric franchise granted to Portland General Electric Company declaring an emergency. Last but not least, do we have a motion on the table to adopt ordinance four eighty one um, and declaring an emergency?
I move to adopt ordinance number forty one. Calling emergency. Thank you.
All right, uh, first by Council Kendall, seconded by Council Martinez. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carry. Thank you, folks. Um, carrying on with our agenda, uh, nine, new business, nothing to report. Ten is unfinished business, nothing to report. And we're down to the city manager report. Um, Andy?
Uh, just a summation of the last couple of weeks. Um, I guess a few things I'll note. Uh, I'd like to pick up the homeless ordinance, come time, place, and manage discussion. If not the next meeting, then definitely the first one of October. You know. You kind of put that off and we did some, some work on, on the map and based on the work session, the next session. So we'll come back with that here at the next meeting, the meeting after. So we did that on the table again. We have uh, two new staff joining us next week. One will be the rare volunteer Doug Keen. He was on, he'll be working on the downtown implementation plan. He was on our PAC meeting. Last week, vocal guy, very excited and he'll look great to know everyone. And Steve Miller, Stephen Miller, Steve Miller, the, not the rapper of the band, um, but he'll be the planner and Steve uh, has a lot of. About thirty years of experience in Oregon, he's a planner in bed, he's been planning commission. He's been doing a lot of work in the private sector too, on development and building. He's getting back into the public sector. Uh, so he'll start um, in two weeks, September twenty second. So we're pretty excited about that too. Last but not least, um, the big project I hear going on is um. You know, a few hiccups here and there, but there, I mean, I guess one of the reasons we want a contingency is because we know there will be the unexpected. They've run into a couple little things, but nothing. Super major. Today was a large concrete slab, so tomorrow we'll figure out what that is. It's either a, a former footing from a playground. Um, or it could be a septic system, but we'll figure that out tomorrow. Um, a couple of weeks back, there was a very, very soft spot and when the tennis court was, we had to just do a bunch of fill gravel there. But other than that, nothing, nothing major really with a lot of the excavation that they've done thus far. Which is good. Um, biggest thing is just going to be, when will materials arrive? So. We were proactive in ordering playground equipment before we even bid the project, but we still may be looking at that arriving in November, December. Which is kind of the stupid world today, but anyway, we're doing what we can to. The only silver lining is even if some of the equipment we ordered is on hold, the same thing could be happening with the contractor too. So they may all arrive at the same time, but. There's a lot of something they can get done in the interim and we'll put the footings in. We got the dimensions for the footing, so we'll, we'll put those in and the, when the equipment arrives, it goes in. But it's a little warm for my taste these days in September, but the good news there is it's good for the work when they put down the tennis court. That needs some nice warm weather for procuring stuff. Good for that work that's going to happen probably next week or so.
Any questions for Andy of his report? All right. Um, let's see. I, um, Council Sheldon, I, I informed Lori that you and I are switching uh, sharing meetings this month. Um, so I'm going to do the planning commission and then Council Sheldon. Will be at the Park and Recs.
There may be some news coming out of that. Oh, this one's, yeah, the meeting postponed for this, from this month.
For Parks and Rec?
Yeah.
Wow. I have eight meetings, I've thought about it. That's all right.
Two later, right?
That's all right. Um, any council reports, kind of a, a, a longer month in August and it's probably very quiet. Everyone's getting. Some of us are getting ready for school or already jumped into school today, right? Uh, well. Good. Um, but anything to report or anything coming down that anyone wants to be aware of? Um, yeah, the only thing I, you know, it was mentioned, we had the North Plains Downtown Improvement Meeting. Um, with the Project Advisory Committee um, on September first. That went really well and um. Actually, uh, you know, they gave us some things to think about and um. Encouraged us to look at other municipalities, you know, during uh, this, this process. So it was a good meeting. It was really a good meeting. So. Just moving forward. Nothing major to report, but we, we just are moving forward and it's pretty exciting. So. Um. And I think that is about it. Anything else lingering?
Just, just a reminder, we have a meeting.
Yes. Just want to make sure.
I almost forgot.
I had a quick question for you, Andy. Um, I know a few months ago, we had mentioned um, approaching Washington County regarding the speed limit on West Union. Changing from forty-five to thirty-five. And my understanding during that time, Washington County wasn't interested in reducing this speed limit. Um, and I, I guess my question to you is what, what is the threshold or what would that take? Because there was another car off the road, right into the walking path. And seeing how that's, you know, deemed a safe route to school. Um, you know, what, what, where's the breaking point essentially for um, either some sort of. Pedestrian barricade, um, reduction, speed limit, et cetera, et cetera, because that's maybe, you know, Paxton can correct me if I'm wrong, that's maybe the third instance in less than a year. Um, on West Union, on the walking path and um, you know, is it going to take someone else dying before Washington County considers that?
Someone has died, as far as I know, and they didn't do anything about the speed limit. Um, and I'm not trying to make light of it. So when I inquired about this before, and it was. It was more than several months ago, it was probably six or nine months ago. The lowest they were willing to go, and this is based on traffic data, it was down to forty miles. Per hour, and they do have it based on percentiles of what the speed. So they went out and collected speed data for a few days. And they'll look at what the average speed is and they'll go maybe five percent above that percentile. So that, they weren't, because it's on Ontario, they weren't going to go down to thirty-five, they would be willing to go down to forty. We talked about that here, and I think council said at that time, well, it's, it's not really worth it in Ontario to country road, even at forty. Or forty-five. I'm happy to go back and request maybe forty. I'm happy to um. Request, we have a meeting with someone from L U T. You know, have him come do a little presentation uh, to the council and explain that. And you explain your concerns. If a couple citizens want to, you know, show up and do the same thing, we can do that as well. I mean, I think that's my role. I just try to. Interact with them, kind of what their, what their confines are, what their rules are, and it's going to be based on traffic engineering because. Yeah, they just, they have to do that for the, the throughput and then it is an Ontario. Um, but I'm happy to have that conversation again. I just do know that thirty-five they weren't willing to go to. That was based on the, the speed data that they had. Forty, yes. It may be in the future when the U D B expands and there's more housing and activity. Thirty-five is a much, much easier sell, but I think in their mind, based on the, the speeds that they were, they, they were collecting, forty was kind of special. I'm happy to follow up with the L U T folks, L U T director, have a conversation again. But, and, and as far as barriers are gone, um, that's another area that they weren't willing to budge. And a lot of that is because. We were operating within the right way. In some areas, that trail gets closer than we would have liked. That's because that's the right way we had. We already encroached three feet into the main diamond property. The city negotiated all that, paid the easement, that's to widen the path, make that a little bigger. Um, doing that all along there would have been. A very big process for what we're deeming an interim path, you know, something that will develop and be more of a. A traditional sidewalk, like there's a long sunset ridge. So we're trying to strike the balance of, you know, um, providing a path that didn't exist before. So in reality, it is safer now. It is a safer road to be on, um, but also knowing that one day it will fully develop to, to a, you know, more of a standard. Um, but I want, I asked, we put, you know, some Jersey barriers, concrete barriers on certain areas. They weren't willing to allow that basically because it's a tight shoulder. And the thought was cars could easily swipe into those. So um. You know, we've had these discussions with the engineers at three J about, you know, how can we approach them with some targeted areas of, of concern? Maybe we could go and give up. An inch here or there, but. So the, the speed, the speed limit, I think, is an easy one, but again, we're not getting off five miles per hour, but which isn't nothing, but.
What a speed limit sign, you know, like one of those flashing signs. I mean, every one of us, you, you're driving down the road, you see that sign and you're, you're going on the speed limit. That's the first reaction is to slow down. That's right.
We need those on commercials.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, hey, uh, coming next month, that's going to be a, a recommendation from the urban spending is to do some of those signage, some of that signage, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know what it would take to do something like that. If we have to get the county's blessing for something like that.
Well, I'm assuming they have the accident data. I have no, you know, uh, yes, sure, I'm, I'm aware that some things have happened. I don't know what that data looks like. I don't know when it happened, what the circumstances were. You know, and you might know more about that than I do, but, you know, they're going to look at statistics all the way and they make all their decisions. Pretty much on statistics. And so, you know, if it's heavily impacted and, okay, or we get congestion in, they're probably going to change their mind, but. The county is, I can tell you what kind of a fight it was to, to get any reduction on North Avenue. Peyton Smith is. Not Smith, and I mean, that, they just, they weren't willing to do all that. And, you know, that was a big time tragedy. And I'm not saying that has to happen again somewhere, but, you know, they're, they're looking more. That's statistically at frequency and conditions and so on those things. And that's a lot of times how they make their decisions. So I don't know what loop has, but I'm assuming they know what those conditions are.
Yeah, and I, and I, if, if council doesn't want to visit this, I, I respect that. I think, um. Again, I'm just trying to be proactive and thinking about, um, you know, neighboring communities in Bethany, along Springville Road, similar profile. There's sidewalks. Next to neighborhood, you know, master plan communities and it's thirty-five miles an hour and. You know, they have bike lanes. It's a, it's a much bigger um. Path and I, I just don't, I, I would love to revisit that. I'm just seeing how this is the third instance in. Less than a year, I have not seen any patrolling from our police department and I know other residents have questioned about that as well, about. Patrolling stop signs and, you know, again, there was another accident just at that intersection last month. Um, and so I, I would love to, to revisit that and whatever capacity it looks like. And I totally respect. Using data, but I think um, just in the last year, we have. Instances of data that show that there are high-speed traffic collisions there. And yes, there's impairment involved. Um, but forty-five really means fifty-five or sixty. There's never any police on West Union doing any kind of speed. Speed traps, anything like that. Um, so also seeing how we're going to be. Expanding the U G B and having even more semi-trucks coming down that road, um, which will come with their own set of improvements, but. I would, I personally and selfishly would like to revisit that, um, just seeing how heavily traveled that is by residents. And I, I will not take. Myself or my kids on that path because of how people drive on that road. And I would love to use it. We've spent, what, one point two million dollars on that pedestrian path?
And again, it's meant to be an improvement over what didn't exist before. So that's kind of sad to hear people saying they won't use a pathway. That we put a lot of time and money into that wasn't there before.
Totally. I mean, I wouldn't have gone before, but just seeing how there's been so many accidents and there's no barricade. From someone coming off the road because they're taxiing and driving. There's no enforcement in our town. And, you know, it's, it, I understand not having a, you know, a barrier, but can we, can we start somewhere else? Can we reduce the speed? In Washington County, look at that data.
Yeah, I, what I can do is ask them to come out and run more. I mean. Counselor Sheldon is correct. They're going to base their decisions on data. If they do another traffic speed collection test again. And it's the same results, they'll come back with the same answer. Yes, we're willing to go down to forty. It, it, every road, Glencoe is going to happen all the time. Someone's going to be driving fifty-five, but the vast majority of people are going to be. Every road, Glencoe is going to happen all the time. Someone's going to be driving fifty five, but the vast majority of people are going to be driving forty, which is still five miles above, you know, five, you know, probably between thirty five, forty. That, that, that's probably every road. So they're going to base their decisions on, there's always going to be the outliers, but they're going to look at the percentile and where, you know, how, how far outside of that they're really willing to go. I'll see if they'll do another traffic data collection. We really haven't had a lot of change in population or any sort of uses since the last time they did it. So the the result might be the same, because I think they did it in early, early twenty twenty one. But I'll see if they're, they're willing to do that again in the one that conversation again. Because forty is on the table for sure. And that's, you know, maybe making that change and then putting up some of the radar signs, maybe that is enough of a a behavioral change for people to make a difference, but but I can start to filter some data collection again.
Yeah, and I'm a curiosity. You might not know this, but the data collection, is that something that they look at citations issued for speed on that?
No, I'm talking about when they did their own speed collection data. So they went out and put out strips at Stewart Lane, then like to United or to ninety second, and they based it on that.
Right, but they don't use any other outside factors such as, yeah, there's that thirty citations issued on West Union Road for speed. They don't use any kind of outside data like that?
They may, they may. Council Sheldon was also right that while we have had incidents, I don't think we've had enough to even, you know, get them to a point, they're going to do some sort of mitigation effort. As sad as that is, it takes like Cornell Road level kind of incidents and fender benders to even then to get them to do something. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure about the criteria, they look at citations and such, for instance, but I would hope that's part of the factor, not, not just speed data, but I'm not.
I'm pretty sure, like, any crash data that's reported.
Crash data, yes. Yeah, citations for speeding.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to say, I think anything better than happening as far as lowering it in that area, but at what point is it deep and it wasn't previously for a walking thing for Phyllisboro School District, for kiddos to do. So I would think, I mean, does any of that get taken into consideration, like the district's saying, use this to walk to school because we're not going to bust you with it, you know? At certain amount of area. And a lot of kids from that Stewart Lane, they travel it so frequently, you know? Maybe have to advocate a little bit stronger for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, all those, all those points and arguments were made to them because it does make sense and it just, it may take city councilors and residents, not just, you know, staff asking for this, just, you know, kind of a more grassroots, local conversation. But again, I wasn't here when the incident happened on North Avenue. That was hard and that actually involved that. That's, that's Phyllis.
I'm barred with emails and letter writing too. You know, I mean, if you get.
So let me, let me find the person I was working with, see if they'll do someone data collection. We'll just revisit it. I'm kind of curious what it, when it happened. You know, how long ago that was anyway. We'll pick up that conversation. So I'm happy with that.
That's one question, I think. So where is the, what part is it? The whole road, the whole water trail?
Specifically where the, the corner is at the Van Dallins.
Yeah. That little just inch in the road.
And there's a traffic coming two or four. Which way is the traffic? Is it better one way or?
I think it's coming into town.
So you'd be coming towards the, heading towards the path a little bit, even though it's off.
Yeah, and regardless, the pack has no protection off of someone just coming off the road going fifty thousand an hour.
I don't travel that much, so I don't see that. God, sad when they put that all my money there. And people are not using it?
No, people, tons of people use it. I definitely see a lot of use. I don't personally use it because I think, you know, just knowing statistically what's happened. It just doesn't make sense to me why we would have a safe route to school on a forty five mile an hour. That's like telling kids to walk on TV highway. We not, not that extreme, but you know, in comparison, no one would have their child walk on, on the side of the road like that. So so thank you, Andy. Thank you for letting us take up a little bit of time. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you. That wonderful party she had.
Yes.
Yeah, they were both, that was great. I want to wait full. Very good, very good. Thank you.
All right. All right, with that, if there's something else, I'll go ahead and close the city council meeting at seven fifty eight. Stick around for more.